Put me in the flag. The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, God, the redeemed justice for all.
And Pam, could you do a roll call please?
Mayor, I'm Alderman Kleiparn. Alderman Donovan.
Eric.
Alderman Bennett.
Eric.
Ivman.
Eric.
Alderman.
Eric.
Steiger.
Thank you. Move to approval of tonight's agenda. A motion, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Stations, we'll move to personal appearance tonight. We have Kara Burt with the St. Gene Oktoberfest.
Guys, I just want to give you an update about and you guys have committed a special closure. We had decided this year to kind of make it a little bit more authentic Oktoberfest style and everything kind of more all in one area. And then that commission, Audubon's and Sylvenus are keeping everything, Audubon's not gravel parking lot connected to it there. And so that's we're anticipating it to be a big, much bigger event this year, obviously smaller. We, the Volkswagen parade has gotten lost traction, so we're seeing over. And then the wiener dog race, of course, start with the Volkswagen parade and end with wiener dog race and it kind of starts banging into, it's now really well left. We've got three beer vendors confirmed for this year and we're thinking we're going to have three to four more confirmed in the next week. And then for food, we have three confirmed and hoping to have some more working on sponsorship and stuff, so get easier. Let you know that now Audubon's is already out.
Thanks Kara. Move to the city administrator's report.
We have an updated report receipts. Item one, move day is next Tuesday. We're going to be closed. We have staff here, but we're moving all of our furniture. Probably going to take all day. We're going to set back out Wednesday morning. Try to have everything up and running probably late that morning into and this building will begin on the 17th, be on the city hall side, be on this side. Baiting that back. And we hope to be back in this building by mid-February of 21st. About six. Budget work session is next Thursday. It'll be at Plaza Drive, in the new place. Get to experience it. It's our last night here as a board. Some other stuff, item five, bumped into a problem with Trail on St. Mary's Road, product worrying that we need environmental surveying work. Entire company can't do it internally. Put the report together as they state it. So we're out at this point, asking for some quotes. Then we'll see what the quotes come back as. Contact MODOT, see what they think. Then engage somebody. We're in a holding pattern-ish, but we can still do the engineering. That'll still continue. Probably got another month to do with that. This will have to work in adjacent to that, try to get
Band on
Exactly. That's why we're having an expert look at it. It's going along St. Mary's Lane or St. Mary's Road. You want it 100 feet on each side and you're going, you're going next to what is now National Park Service properties. So they, because of that, they want to engage or want to look at those expanded areas to make sure we're not impacting anything. Word is that we probably won't find anything, but just in case.
But 100 feet on either side of the road, that's on private property.
It's, it's outside of just the construction area. It's to see if there's something else that it would bump into.
So what if, well, I guess
Is this like archaeological?
It's not a, it's, it's it's heritage and looking back at paperwork from whatever sources they have, see what could potentially impact. That could, could be, could have. And item six, I've attended various demos, some text notifications. Those are falling within the cost range where we expected. I've got a few more demonstrations coming up. We'll put some money into the budget. Decide which group we want to go with, do we think works best. Some, some of them have a free, well, I think it's a more intuitive operation. Others are a little complicated, looking for the intuitive stuff out on site. Ready. We'll scroll through a number of All right. Any questions?
Thank you. Move to staff reports and we'll start with Chief Steiger.
Chief Steiger is not here.
Not here.
Not here.
Okay. Feel better. Okay, so we'll go with Community Development Administrator David Beller.
Mr. Mayor, if you could pause one, one moment.
Yes.
I was looking at Kenny's report. He's talking about oil changes and different maintenance. Do, Happy, do we have a complete vehicle inventory listing for the fire department?
They would keep that in-house. I don't know offhand.
Okay. Okay. I was just trying to kind of quantify like, hey, we, we probably save X dollars in our own maintenance over there or whatever. So we're kind of interested in the, in the entire vehicle inventory, what kind of utilization we have. I know there's a Crown Victoria over there that sometimes gets discussed and it would be, I wouldn't mind walking through that at a future work session.
So you've got them, you know, three fire trucks, the van that they drive, the brush trucks. I mean, you've got a number of vehicles that they maintain in-house.
Okay. And I don't mean to hold this up tonight. I just, a point of curiosity for them, you know, I want to be able to look at that later on, so.
Yeah, so we have a, the maintenance crew is paid to do that, but yeah, you're saving not having to figure out a way to get it down to the shop. And the larger trucks, you would have to take it to
Yeah, a facility.
Yeah. Roger that. Okay. Yeah, let's save the city money.
Go ahead, Dave.
You got our report there in front of you. A few updates on the historic preservation grant. We did select a location at 167 South Gavri. It's on the agenda for approval tonight. That's the Francois Valley Two House. The Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant received notification today that we did not receive that grant, but that probably has over 500 applicants for that grant. It's a 100% grant, so if it comes out again next year, we'll apply again. Under the Building Department Code Enforcement, you see the numbers there, down under sidewalk violations, city property work completed, non-city properties prepped and updated. They were all mailed. A fairly extensive letter two weeks ago picturing the property to be replaced. I contacted the six remaining property owners verbally today, spoke with four, left a message for one and could not get in touch with the other, but properties have been marked for two weeks. They've been notified for six months. That work will begin next week. Not much else on the front page. You go to the next page. I put River Stage on there. We had quite a bit of rain, but it is down to about nine foot today, so it has peaked and coming back down. Property maintenance, just a few updates on the sidewalk issues that are considered property maintenance. The contractor that we hired will complete five now, six remaining, has told me that he will do the work. I've given him till five o'clock Monday to produce a contract or a signed affidavit that he'll do it himself. Now we will start that work a week also. 42 South Main, if you remember, we had a public hearing about six weeks ago. That structure is now boarded up. All the dilapidated windows and doors, along with the rear deck, are boarded up. Holes are patched in about six spots. It'll probably stay in that shape until after Jura Fett and then we've got a little bit of masonry work we're going to do. That structure is, it doesn't look the best. That's not something that's on our agenda, unfortunately. We did paint the wood, but the work is done. Yeah.
So are we going to add that? Are we going to do a new, add that to the running total on that property then? That work that's been, that's completed and then going to be completed, I guess?
Yeah, the contractor that did the work billed us for the work that is completed, so I will put that bill in the mail to the owner probably early next week, which will start a 30-day time clock. After 30 days, it'll be added to the lien and then we'll receive a separate vote.
Happy, do we have an approximate ballpark on those sidewalks that's going to be putting on? What that whole
Going to be in
And your thoughts on our ability to recruit?
The folks I spoke with today, I know two said they plan to pay it back. In fact, one asked if we could add an additional section to what we're replacing because he feels like it needs to be replaced also. The other three, I, there'll probably be liens.
It's a little bit of a concern, you know, that much money and
It is, but it's also a concern that the amount of tripping hazards, I mean, some of these sidewalks are in really horrible shape and we do not offer a very attractive downtown if we can't walk around it.
Has anybody taken us up on the payment plan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, we're probably up to five or six now at this point that have taken us up on that and I've got another application sitting on my desk, but the work must be finalized.
And then as, as far as applying for the reimbursement, have any of the ones that have already completed the work applied for that yet?
Yeah, that's part of the five or six. Of the five or six, I would say two, two or three of those are folks who received the letters back in February.
Okay. Good.
So we started out with 18, remember? Five of those were ours, so we're down to six. And if the gentleman who says he's going to do it himself gets me a contract or a signed affidavit, by five o'clock Monday, we'd be down to five. Any other questions? Thank you, folks.
Thank you, David.
Well, my first word is thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. From a TV station here, we have two channels, 990 and 991, which is downstairs. I've been a member of the TV station for the last 10 to 12 years. And now I'm, I guess, chairman and my vice chairman is Phil Tucker. What we'd like to do, and we used to do that, I don't know why it dropped, but we want to present you all with a plaque. One for 2020 and one thousand for 2022. And it basically says, "An operation for your dedicated service and support for the work you have done with the community," and that is with the community, "by way of the city, St. Genevieve Board in making the experience an enjoyable and prosperous event over the current year." And I truly mean that. You all have been quite a plus for us. And I really think that we've got better things to come, yet for those stations. I did, any of you have any compliments or comments?
No, thank you very much.
We've got your tone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight? Okay. We will move to tonight's consent agenda.
Mr. First.
May I have a motion in a second? Anybody like to discuss any of the topics out there? All in favor?
Aye.
Take us to some old business. We'll have a second reading of Bill Number 4575, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Community Access Television Board, channel 990, 991.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Kleiparn.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Ivman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Seven yeses, zero noes. Bill Number 4575 now becomes ordinance 4496.
Thank you, Pam. Take us to new business. First item would be the approval of the low bid of Joker's Inc. for the Jefferson Street sidewalk stormwater project in an amount of $66,530.
Have you had a question about that? Why was that listed as a bill number because it was in a previous budget?
It was a bill number.
There isn't a bill number on it.
There's no bill number. It's just an approval.
Oh, because it's just a bill. Yeah, this isn't, this isn't the agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just a bill.
Yeah.
A bit of approval. Sorry.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion there? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take us to a first reading of Bill Number 4576. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a, an agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, municipal agreement for public improvements along Route M.
This one's new to me, so if we could have just a little discussion of kind of what, how this came about, this was before I got on the board, so maybe I'm happy if you give it just a little background.
So MODOT has a, an improvement plan for accessibility and this is one of the routes that they're looking at improving is along Highway M. We were notified maybe six months ago that they were talking about it, but now they've submitted for approval of, of this agreement for them to do the improvements. They would do the improvements, make it accessible at locations that they need to, make it wider as they need to, and then, and then dedicate it to the city in essence. It becomes the city's responsibility.
So does it go out past progress Parkway?
Yeah, it goes all the way to Valley Springs.
Oh, okay. Is it going to be on that south side?
It's on both sides of that. Where crosses, they recently improved that cross, the crossing.
By the insurance by likeness?
Yeah. So this will carry from 61 down to that crossing, across the street and down to Valley Springs. Not down on the Valley Springs road on the street, but up to that intersection.
Right, Mark, show it to me.
Second.
Do you have a second? That was Alderman Prince.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take us to a first reading of Bill Number 4577. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain officials.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who had the motion there?
Eric.
And then second for Alderman Prince. Any discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to first reading of Bill Number 4578. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing a no parking restriction on the south side of Jefferson Street between Third and Fourth Street. Motion in a second, any discussion on this? We've talked about it quite a bit. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that will also take us to a first reading of Bill Number 4579. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri amending Chapter 203 Fire Prevention and Protection of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code as set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Second, Pam.
A motion in a second, any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other business to discuss tonight?
I've got one and we, we already passed it, so it's not in the consent agenda. We were talking about that EV charger. Were we talking about putting a parking spot on Jefferson Street or on Valley Street?
It'd be off Valley.
Really? Being behind the park?
Because that's the only area that was really level and easy to access, so we can work with, you know, creating a retaining wall and the electric will be right there in the chase.
My preference would be on the Jefferson Street side. I'd take out that grass area and put in a parking spot there, but
But just put
This is just approving the
Yeah, by.
Right. I don't think we have enough depth on Jefferson Street side.
How much depth do we need?
For most parking spaces, you're looking at 20 feet. So you want to get them off the sidewalk and up. I don't think we have the space. I think I measured that, we didn't have the space.
Well, you, so you have enough room for two car? I mean, I don't know if this is the exact, I mean, are you, you'll be able to charge two cars with this station?
Yeah.
And there's enough room back there on Valley Street?
Any other topics to discuss prior to the work session? Tonight's work session to order. We will move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Work session agenda item number one is the tourism director. We're going to discuss the hiring process and potential avenues.
So I've talked to a couple of you about the obvious, what obviously has gone on, but I've also discussed some, some questions about how we want to pursue this or what we look at. We did this last time and I still want the board to consider and discuss not having a tourism director, but going through an agency so that you have, what I look at is the potential of having a number of people that have good, or have disciplines that we need, such as the, the social media part of it, being able to make videos, being able to, you know, contract the people to take pictures. It's things that we don't normally have on staff, but it's also up to the board on if you want to continue to have a tourism director. We are a destination marketing organization. Without a tourism director, you're not the DMO, which means you then miss out on the state matching grant funds. This year we have $35,000 plus our $35,000 match for advertising that we'll be doing this year and a marketing plan, so $25,000 is, is marketing and then, I'm sorry, $50,000 is marketing and then $25,000 is, is that right? $20,000 is, is our marketing plan. So the, the issue is that we've had a number of people that we've had committees look at and talk to and, and hire and they've not been successful. If we're going to move forward with hiring, I'm not going to do a committee. I'm going to do it in-house. I may ask the mayor and the assistant city administrator, but if we hire somebody, we're going to look at hiring them and making sure that they can mix with our team. I don't think there was enough support with the last person to mix with our, our group that I think made it difficult in understanding how this community operates and how we function as a city and how you function as a city, which is a public organization, not private, and that's, that's difficult to understand how that process works. It's, it's not easy for some people to, to understand. My feeling is that with a marketing organization, you could use the money that you're going to pay somebody, their salary, and we also had a request in there to look at also hiring somebody to assist. So you had two salaries that you were going to look at for the next year and then also marketing funds that we, we have allocated in our general fund and then the money that you allocate for matching grant funds. If you combine all of that together, you could take that to the, the advertising agency and say, granted, create a plan for us and we obviously want the best bang for the buck kind of thing. Everybody, everybody wants that, but where do we need to advertise? Come up with that plan, working with tourism, which is your TTC and TAC groups, and then bring that plan back and then this is how we're going to implement it. Does it need to be social media? Does it need to be terrestrial radio and television? Does it need to be something else? Is it print? You know, we're looking at, at this point, we don't have that kind of feedback to know what's, what works, what doesn't work. We're working on implementing that. The next person that comes in can implement that. You can, we've signed up and we're working to see what the website, how that functions, what people are looking at there. I can tell you that the, we've had 400 more people look at the website over the last couple of months because of Jura Fett. That's the page everybody's going to. Before that, it was the honey festival. Nothing else is registering that much increase, but those are because of the festivals. But you, you know, you kind of track that and know that's what people are looking at and wanting to find out about. So then the, the question is, again, we can hire somebody, do you want to keep it the same salary? We have a salary range now that, that we'll refer to from our, our salary survey, depending upon the amount of, of experience that person has and whether they want benefits or not. You know, are we going to allow them to work remotely? That seemed to be an issue with, with some of those, some of the businesses in town. Is this a job that you cannot succeed at because there are so many requests and so many interested parties, there is no way to, for that person to succeed? And with a marketing agency, you can isolate them and just work with your groups so that you're not getting all of this input and not being able to succeed because you have too much, that you're trying to do too much and trying to satisfy too many people. Our job is to advertise to the city as a whole, as a destiny.
Other maybe more, more financial capabilities that can hire somebody and hire these, you know, can get this quality material and put this stuff together and pay that person if you want to pay them seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars. I just don't think budget-wise we can afford that. I know that's what I've heard as that should be the salary, and we talked about that within TAC and TTC. They believe seventy thousand is what you need. You can throw seventy thousand at somebody, but if they can't, they still have to hire people to do that, to make that product so that we can put it out there. But that's what I would see in the future. And that actually comes from David Bova years ago when I started in the city. This is one of his recommendations. Because I think, and I think that makes more sense, because they can also act independent of the city. When I do stuff, I have to bid it out. I have to go through a process. We skirt that issue because we'll have lower-priced items that we do. But the big stuff has to go out for bid. It's a long, lengthy process. Which is the other reason for trying to hire somebody myself, is that if we have board members get together, you have to coordinate that, you got to drag them into a meeting, you got to interview, then you got to drag them back. I mean, you end up with a process that any candidate is going to say, "I can find something quicker than this." It, I think it limits to who you're available, who you have available to interview. So that's one reason for speeding up. So that's a number of subjects that I've probably gotten off the path.
But you know, we've talked about that before, of going to the county and other entities, you know, around and stuff to help fund this, but we came up empty.
Well, so we've had some recent discussions with them. So I've talked to at least one of the commissioners about going out and looking at an initiative to increase the bed tax. Right now, the bed tax is only in city limits, right? So all the Airbnbs, hotels pay that two percent in quarterly. And so I think there's a much better appetite now to maybe take it county-wide. I think the county is interested in having that discussion and being able to say, "Here's two percent of the bed tax county-wide," because if you look at the number of Airbnbs and other overnight lodging in the countywide, you could really start increasing the budget. It would be a way for the county to be a part of it without them having to raise any or take anything out of their current budget. And so I think they would support it. I've heard from one of the commissioners that they would support it. So there is ways to increase, because one of the biggest problems we have now is with our tourism director is they have a lot of bosses, a lot of goals and things that they want to get accomplished, and a lot of things pushed upon them, and not enough budget to get it done, right? So you've got everybody screaming that they want print media, they want billboards, they want radio, they want social media, and that person has very little staff and very little money to get it all done.
Who are all the people yelling for that, though?
For which part?
You said they have too many bosses, that there's too many people on print media.
Well, see.
Are we talking about the merchants downtown? Are we talking about us as a board, or are we talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I think I hear it from everybody.
Ultimately, if we're paying them, and we are their boss, and, I mean, we dictate what they can spend money on, or, not, not what they can spend money on, how much money they have to spend.
There was discussion, you know, that-
I cut you off, too.
Well, no, I think you're right. They get a lot of pressure from different entities, you know. Sometimes it's a single business owner, sometimes it's from the tourism committee meetings that we have, sometimes it's from city hall, sometimes it's from, you know, from, you know, entities out in the county. So, you know, they're getting fed all this information, "Well, we need to be focusing on this, or we need to be focusing on that." And it's, it's a tough job. I mean, there is a lot of people pulling at that person, and there's only so much time and so much funds to go around for that position. That's why I think it would be even more difficult to hire a firm and try to get them to try to look at what our needs are and for them to really focus on that. I think they're going to throw an inexperienced person at us or an experienced person at us, and we'll pay the difference, and we'll get, and I just, I'm really scared of what a firm would charge us. I think it would take more of your time, Happy, and we'd get less of an inferior product. Maybe it'd look pretty slick, but I don't think it'd meet the needs of all the entities here that are stakeholders in what we have going on here in St. Genevieve area. I'm really nervous about trying to think about hiring a firm.
Especially, especially without not knowing, you know, the cost of it and stuff. But, you know, these parties we're talking about here, I mean, I think it's no secret, you know, who they were and stuff. And I heard some of the comments of, you know, some of the things that went on and stuff, and then they kind of settled down once we got somebody hired, which I think is the person they picked. Is that not correct? Um, yeah, I'm not sure I understand a lot of what went on and stuff, but anyhow, I don't know. You know, that joint venture thing, to me, I think is the way to go, where we can, I know we seem to always pick up the tab for it, and that was the whole reason of getting rid of the welcome center, you know, of changing that whole system we had in place, because it was a big money cost to us and stuff. But I think that, of sharing that cost around, spreading it around through the county, you know, having a commission, you know, might be the way to go.
And the idea of a CVB is, I think, a great idea. Not a lot of entities of our size have them, but because right now, as it sits, there's just no money to support a CVB, you know, so I don't think it could even happen. You couldn't afford to pay one person's salary, you know, to make it happen. But down the road, if, if we get the bed tax to go county-wide, and then maybe even potentially go with, instead of a bed tax, to a hospitality tax, so that the wineries and some of the other hospitality industries are paying into that. If you go, I went to, two weeks ago, I went to Nashville, every one of my receipts had hospitality tax added on to the regular sales tax. You know, so there was another two or three percent, I could never figure out exactly what it was, but, you know, these other, all across the United States, they're having these hospitality taxes now, not just a bed tax. So it's, it just goes without saying, when you go visit and you're a tourist someplace, that you're going to get charged for the services for them advertising and marketing to you. So when you got to that point, where, when you went past the bed tax and maybe even went to a county-wide hospitality tax, now you've got the funds to support a CVB and put it outside the city and have all the entities come together, the chamber, the county, the city, whoever else, and then you might be able to really do some big things with a, with a CVB that's kind of independent.
I think you're confusing, though, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau only being funded by either hospitality or occupancy tax. You could put in money from general funds-
Oh, sure, absolutely.
And help support it.
Yes, yeah.
And I think that's what I was looking at, is you've got at least two agencies that could help support and fund that. We could also pay out of TTC as well, but that's a separate fund as well as the general fund.
I think you are more or less speaking from the county perspective, right? As far as them trying to fund their portion of it.
I mean, I think it's a lot just to go going now and say, you know, start supporting tourism. But if you look at the way of maybe at least doing the bed tax county-wide, that's a way for them to start supporting it and it not come out of their current budget, you know. I mean, everybody knows when you go visit a place that you're going to pay additional sales tax for either hospitality or bed tax, whatever they call it, you know, so it's just, it's a given. It, I don't know how many years ago, that was fifteen or twenty years ago, that the bed tax did go out county-wide, but it got shot down. I think now there might be a chance to, there was a really strong pushback from an individual back then, and I think now with the way society has adapted to it and understood that those taxes are out there, I would think that the county residents would see that very seldom am I actually paying that tax. It's tourists and visitors that come into the county that are paying that. So it's like giving a speeding ticket to somebody out of town, I hate to say that, but I mean, it's, it's not your local residents that are paying that tax.
And the county supports us with five thousand dollars every year, and that goes into our tourism general fund. So we do get some money from the county, and they help us out in that respect. But we did ask them to increase it. They didn't see where they could put it in their budget for 2023, and doesn't mean we're not asking for 2024.
But if you look at the number of Airbnbs and lodging places that we have inside the city, it's almost double that outside of the county. So if you look at what we bring in now with the bed tax, if you would double that, that would be some significant funds for a tourism director to finally start meeting some of the needs, you know. It'll take a lot longer for everyone to come in and start, you know, going after the different parks, but it would really give a new tourism director some opportunity to have a real marketing plan and have some real dollars to go with it.
I think when we went to the county before and stuff, we just asked them to write us a check. This is a little different approach and stuff, and not really have-
We asked the last time because of the request from TAC, TTC to increase the salary, and that was the, that was the upfront request, but also, you know, to help out. But I think, you know, if you're showing them something along those lines, then maybe they'll be willing to, you know, come up with the funding.
Because I'm pretty sure there's an adjoining county and town that does that now. I've heard they have some type of commission, and it's collected through some kind of tax, but it's not a city expense.
I'm hearing a lot of, I don't think that this can happen, and I don't think that we can do this. Like, I would like to see some actual numbers, like, what is this firm going to cost? What are their references? Who else are they?
I don't know why we'd want to discuss that when we're not even sure we want to do something along those lines, because there're going to be various costs. So, you know, I talked to a local, a local group about, they're using an advertising agency, but they spend ten to twenty thousand dollars a year, so it's not that much. But they like what they're doing in the way of social media and getting advertising on cable channel, not cable channels, ding dong, streaming channels, but they feel like they're reaching their audience that way. But we're looking at a higher amount of money, and I think it just comes down to what that, what it could be depending upon the size of the firm. I mean, we can-
But if your initial push was for the firm, then they should have some referenceable clients that would be similar to us in what we're, what we're shooting for. And see, I mean, if some of the feeling is that they're not going to get the personal touch, or, or that they're not going to provide what we would have in a, in a director, I'd like to know that, other than just speculation, I'd like to know what works in, as a comparison.
I'd have to agree with you, Eric, because I think also we almost want to know that by the seventeenth, which seems like-
Impossible.
-impossible to nail it down, seventeen. Well, I mean, how are you going to present a budget? You're going to need to know, like, okay, first, how will we make a decision based on what we know today? We have a huge unknown, we don't know what a firm would cost, so we can't, we can't compare financially to make that decision. So we have to throw that criterion out. And then if we were to press for being able to make that decision, you got to come back to us on the seventeenth with a number to fund your next year's budget.
I think we know how much we have allocated for tourism now, and, I mean, if we approve that amount of money, and if we can't get a firm for that amount of money-
Then that makes a decision for us.
Then that makes a decision for us. I don't want to, I don't want to make this decision quickly, but at the same time, it just seems like a lot of speculation tonight, and I'd just like to hear some numbers either way. I mean, if, if it's going to save us enough that losing the, the grant funding that we get is going to be a wash, and we're getting more out of it, then that's great. If it doesn't, and we need to hire somebody, that's fine, too. And I agree, there are a ton of bosses, and there are a ton of directions that these, that these candidates are being pulled in once they're selected. And, and, you know, I know that we get a little bit of money from the county, but how much of this advertising is, is for businesses over, you know, at the county line that support the county? And I don't, I don't mean to seem closed-minded with that, but, you know, we've had, we've had directors in the past that focused their entire career around the wineries out and on the west end, you know, and I'm not saying that any of our recently hired tourism directors have done that, but, I mean, I would like to at least see what, how much of that is actually benefiting the city if we are supporting that to the degree that we do.
You're talking about, on what's outside city limits, or?
Yes.
Okay.
But so, Happy, how we pay for either one, we could still look at the commission and a joint venture with the county and possibly the chamber for funding either way we go, correct?
Mm-hmm. And I think the, the cost issue is, it depends on what you're going to do, too. So if you're going to spend fifty thousand dollars, then what is it going to take to spend that fifty thousand dollars? If you're going to spend thirty thousand dollars, what's that, you know, that may be different. You may not have as many needed assets as you would with the higher amount. And it depends on where it needs to go.
And it feels like it's not entirely salary-based. I mean, there's, there's a lot of other line items in, in that budget that I think are dependent around somebody physically being here doing stuff.
Or is that for the water center?
We're throwing publishing in there, I mean, or marketing in there. Those would all be funds that would be dedicated to marketing, continuing the market.
So publication is for advertising, which we'll use when we advertise for the individual. It's not, that's not a marketing part of it. A lot of that has to do with maintaining the walking center and the staff and staff maintenance.
But we have, we would have that person's benefits.
Right. So I say, it's fifty thousand plus, fifty-five thousand plus.
Office machinery and equipment, are we still maintaining all the office machinery?
We have some there still, yeah, we've got printers.
And we're required to maintain those.
Mm-hmm. Still our building, still our responsibilities.
Staff members that work down there.
Yeah.
So have a computer and a couple printers.
And that's been a very big push, is to make sure we keep staff down there, so we include that with the budget. And that's why I would recommend if you, if we did advertising agency, we're looking at whatever the salary is and putting that into, using the marketing fund, putting that into, putting our match into that. So you'd have your total maybe at a hundred thousand dollars, strictly going for advertising for the city through the marketing agency. So we wouldn't change the overall total, we would just change where that money comes from and goes to.
So the number we have in the, in the budget right now and stuff, we say, go with that number, that gets put into the budget and stuff, and then after, you know, our first day of budget and stuff, then we can explore whatever opportunities we want to do.
Yeah, I'll put a number in there, it's just, how do we want to pursue this?
Right. Well, that'd give us the time, then, that we didn't have to make a decision by the seventeenth.
If you want with the crowd.
Yeah, did anybody from the crowd or public want to make any comments, have any comments on that? I will, I will say that I had the opportunity to meet with the Downtown St. Jen organization on Monday. We did discuss this topic, and they, they would like to see a dedicated tourism director be here, one dedicated person as opposed to an agency. I think there's some concerns there regarding what we've already discussed tonight, where is your point of contact? Who, who's going to be managing said account? Is it going to be multiple people managing said account? Are you going to have consistency within your campaigns? You know, if, let's just say, for instance, that some person is managing our account to start, and then they get promoted or move to a different agency, we're going to have somebody brand-new. Those things happen, so there is some concern there. They would like to see a visible presence here, and I would tend to agree with that. I like the thought of that. I mean, you mentioned in your comment earlier, Bob, about, you know, this firm would be potentially managing or campaigns for, for a number of other cities, and that's fine, that shows experience, but are we getting the personal touch? You know, it's not a dedicated person to what we're trying to do here in St. Jen from a tourism perspective. So I think it's, it's fair to consider their input, because we're talking a group that's, you know, of business owners, or people that are a part of the historic organizations. So you're, you're getting solid feedback from them, and they're, they're kind of telling us what they want. So it's just a thought. We did discuss CVBs in that conversation as well. We did have some questions regarding, it's my understanding, and Deana, correct me, but we had a CVB. This would have been maybe disbanded or dissolved in the early aughts, is that what your understanding was?
Two thousand seven, two thousand eight-ish, when the city became the DMO for-
Okay.
I think at that time, it was a volunteer, unfortunately. You were receiving it.
It was, it was, but they did have funds, and that's where everything kind of channeled through at the times. That's where tourism kind of channeled through at the time.
And I think that's what you see, is people get tired, and they want you for somebody to take it over and manage it professionally. You can do it for a certain amount of time, and I think that was brought up back when they had the flood in seventy-three, you know, and started talking about tourism and bringing people in, so.
And Deana, what were some of the other municipalities we discussed that have CVBs in place that were maybe more localized?
I mean, like St. Charles, and Herman, Hannibal, they all have CVBs that operate within their city or their chamber for their tourism.
I mean, the, the three cities she listed would be, I mean, for lack of a better phrase, I mean, they're our competition, right? Those are, those are destinations for, you know, weekend getaways, things of that nature. I think we have more to offer from a historic perspective. Our closest comp that she mentioned, you know, from that standpoint is probably St. Charles. I mean, Hannibal does have a lot of that as well, but, you know, we're steeped in history here. But I, I think the three, the three destinations she just mentioned, you know, from a tourism perspective, I mean, that, that's our direct competition, right? They're close enough to the St. Louis area, you're pulling, you're trying to pull people different directions. We're trying to pull them to our area where Herman, Hannibal, St. Charles, you know, they have a geographic advantage on us, just being a little bit closer to St. Louis than we are, but when you consider Hannibal, and you consider Herman, and you consider St. Jen, those are all very similar in what, what they're trying to do. So it's, that's just the feedback that I've received, not only from the Downtown St. Jen group, but from a few other interested parties, that they would really like to see that position stay as a dedicated tourism director for our city. I do think there's momentum, or at least there should be, in engaging the county and seeing what we could do from a collaboration perspective, because we're, it's mutually beneficial. The destination of St. Jen is not just the city, it is the county, it is, it's everything. We're, we're, we're marketing as a destination, and that, that does include the county, you know, they are a stakeholder in that, so it's important to consider that, I think. It'd be, I don't know what the process is like for a CVB or forming that. Do you have any experience in that, or? Okay. But if it's something that we would, we could consider that, I mean, it's probably not a fast process, I would say. So it probably is not something that would preclude us from moving forward with either an agency or, or hiring that individual, but it's also very important, yes, Deana, go ahead, and you can jump in.
I do have some information that I can share about the CVB.
Sure.
I did a level of research since our conversation earlier, so I would be happy to share that with the entire panel.
Do you want to share it now, or do you want to-
I can print, or get copies to you, I think it's really lengthy.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, if you could send it out.
But we're going to need someone to, to walk us through that process, right? So I don't think it needs to be Happy, and it certainly is probably not, we're not going to pay a firm to go about that. So if we ever do decide to join or create a CVB, we're going to need somebody to take us through those steps to get there.
Sure.
And I really don't think it's a smart idea to put that on Happy's plate. He's got seventeen different projects right now. I think, is that the latest number, or you passed that number now?
We reduced it by a couple.
Okay, I guess, so.
I don't know who had the, the carriage, you have Hannah first? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, there's things like curb tours and all of those things, but if we don't have a person here, who does that fall on? We've, we missed the boat with American Queen that would always dock in Chester and bus over, and, I mean, that, that, while they were only in town for a few hours, they usually had a pretty big impact in shopping and going to this hardhouse and stuff, and so that contract wasn't signed. And that out, and we have, I know somebody that drives for the American Queen, and they say they keep getting asked why they're not coming to St. Jen. I've been already, I've worked with several nursing homes and senior living centers and a couple of other tourism groups. There's a tourism group coming down from Iowa in April of 2024, and so, like, we've, everybody's kind of had to be siloed to do that because we haven't had a person overall to, to do that. And so where do, you know, where do those people contact, and how does that go about if we have a firm? So it's big picture, there's a lot of details that fall to the wayside.
Sure. Deana, you want to go ahead?
So Joe, just to kind of piggyback on what you said, you need someone to help facilitate the CVB. I do have a contact in Cape, at their Cape CVB, that would be willing to come and talk to us about maybe a restructure or a reinvention, I guess, of our CVB, if interested. They've been doing it for years down there, and it is an arm of their city's last charter, so I don't really know how the jurisdiction falls, but they, I did reach out to them, of course, and that relationship.
I think that would be beneficial.
I would agree.
I mean, we have to go outside the city. We have to be marketing as an area, as a county-wide, yeah. You don't just come to St. Jen City and spend three days as easily as you could if you are spending time in the whole county, you know? There's just so much to do county-wide versus just inside city limits.
Jeff?
Thank you. Well, something I'd just like to reinforce, whether that is with a CVB or a marketing coordinator, director, or agency, however we do it, the important thing that I think Happy hit on that I really want to reinforce on behalf of the, the attractions, and Joe's kind of touching on it, too, right there, is that what we have here is something really remarkable, and it should be competing better than it is, because the story is wonderful, the environment is remarkable, it's special, it, and there's something for everybody. There's no reason why families, groups, tour groups, whoever, can't be staying for a while. But the key job for whoever or whatever is in this position has to be creating greater awareness of this package, this remarkable package that we have here to offer people outside of the immediate area. That's number-one priority. It's not cross-marketing once they're in town, it's not dressing up flowerpots, it's marketing this remarkable product. And even though, as Joe again has pointed out, that there are dangers and too many voices pulling a person in too many directions, that one of the things that we're trying to start on and we need to keep working on is pulling together information on why this is a special place, what the strengths are, and getting that to whoever is conveying that message. And they have to get it marketed outside of the immediate area. That has to be the primary job for whoever or whatever gets into this position.
Go ahead, Deana. No, you don't.
I also just want to say, like, from a personal perspective, I, for one, am for a tourism director in person. Working with them directly has got to be the goal of the community, I feel like. Also, too, just to kind of go back years ago, two thousand nine, maybe two thousand ten, we hired a marketing firm to do the branding of St. Genevieve. And it started out very ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars, and by the time it was all said and done, within thirteen or fourteen months later, we were upwards of twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. So no matter if you have a plan or not, those dollars are going to increase and increase for every event, every promotion, whatever you're doing, they're going to keep tacking on. So to put a true number to it, Eric, it's impossible. Right now, it really truly is impossible, because they're going to give you a fluff number now, and it's just going to grow over time. And so I witnessed it, it was not fun, and coming up with the money at the end of that whole ordeal was, actually, honestly, we got it from the city, the city. And it was, it was supposed to be a collaborative between the city, the county, the tourism, and the chamber, and the city paid their part, the chamber paid their part, but the city also paid tourism's part. I think county paid for their website part, but that was really all that contributed. And I feel like, again, it's a whole, our package is a whole package, and it just happens to fall on the shoulders of the city, and I don't think that that's necessarily there. So I'm for a person, direct person.
I was saying, when I talked to the president of the Downtown Merchant Association, she said the same thing, she's like, "You've got to have a person here." You know, when, when a new event pops up, how are you going to get them support to make that event? You know, just, if you look at the Honey Festival, how it's grown so, so quickly, and she didn't even have that much support from, from us on the city side, but they, they, those are the things that, you know, if you want to be successful, you've got to have some boots on the ground, looking at things and, and being a part of it and building those relationships. I just, I'm really- I just, I'm really against hiring a firm.
So let me also say this to the group here. I am covering two jobs, this is the third time I've done this, and I get nothing else out of it except aggravation. Keep that in mind.
I will say that the Downtown Merchant Group has offered to take over some of the social media in the interim, so I think that's something, I know we can't agree on anything tonight, but if you look at what they do, they do a fabulous job marketing for the downtown businesses. I think we ought to take them up on that offer. They basically don't really want to be charged, or charge us for that, but they do want a little bit of budget so they can boost posts and place some ads in targeted areas like that. So, you know, I think if you gave them 500 bucks a month in the interim till we got somebody hired, I think that would appease them, that they could take on this role.
We did discuss that today, actually. And I think next week, they're gonna have a discussion. I think Downtown Group was trying to get through Jertifet.
Yeah.
And then next week, I think they're gonna reach out directly to you, Happy, to discuss that. But if you guys do follow their Facebook and social media accounts, they do push out a lot of really nice content, so they'd be a huge help in the interim. Go ahead.
I just want to point out that the Downtown, it's Downtown St. J, St. spelled out, there's two pages out there, and one of it's not us, so the other one is, that has like a pink corollary, but it's Downtown St. spelled out, Jen, is our Facebook page.
And so that's just one aspect of it, that's the social media. We still have all of our grant money that we're also gonna be spending here in the, what would be the second quarter for us, I'm sorry, second quarter for the state, first quarter for us. So, I mean, there's other things to maintain, and I'm down at the Welcome Center every day, making sure the staff has what they need, if we need to send letters to people, information, I mean, that's just part of what I have to cover, whether we have somebody here or not, until we get somebody hired. So we can have some help. Downtown St. Jen, I think the page looks so much better than it did. It seems like that's been a transformation over the last few months, from what I've been looking at. And I think their help would be very beneficial. But I also have people in-house and some folks that we've hired outside that are also helping us with the Facebook page. So we're making those kind of inroads where they, where to get some help. There's only so much that you can pass on to others.
Well, and that also leads to what I was gonna say, just to kind of close what I was gonna mention on this, is that I think this does need to be, the time is of the essence for this position because we're, one, we're moving into a new budget year, and, two, we would like to have, if we do go with a person, right? That's a process, and we would like to have that person in there, get some time, get their feet underneath them, understand what we do, how we do it, what's been done, talk with their council, TTC, TAC, and be ready to go for next year. So it is something that is gonna be, I think we need to approach it with some urgency, is what I would say.
I'll come back with some costs at the next meeting, just to kind of give you an idea of what the comparable cities, what they do, so you kind of know what an advertising agency does.
And again, I'm not, I'm not pushing for the firm by any stretch, but, I mean, everything is real speculative, so. I mean, if you need to hire somebody, then I'm good with hiring somebody.
I would say, in the meantime, we could also advertise. Worst-case scenario, we spend a few bucks advertising while we make up a decision, but I would say we start advertising for the position.
And then not hire somebody?
Yeah, absolutely.
How does that look?
It happens all the time.
That happens all the time.
You have a qualified applicant, or the specs change.
I'm okay with that.
But again, I don't feel like, the few people that have talked on this board, that anybody's really in favor of leaning towards the firm, so, I mean, I don't know that that's a huge risk, but maybe I'm wrong. I won't speak out of turn.
Okay. No, that's fine.
Anybody else from our crowd? Yes?
Happy, I think you answered your own question. When you said you're down at the visitor's center all the time, you're taking care of matters that need to be taken care of, that only somebody locally, a tourism director, can really take care of. And it seems to me that just a marketing firm would not be available to take care of some of these matters that maybe only a local tourism director could take care of. And I'm listening to Kara say, you know, buses that come in, and we're not getting the buses. And who takes care of that? Who talks to the different agencies out there about trying to get buses into the area? Only a tourism director could do that. And let me see what else of my notes here. I don't know, grants. I mean, who writes grants? I don't think a marketing firm's going to do that. I mean, at least, I'm with the Art Guild, and I know we write our own grants, and we do the market, I mean, we do the matching and so forth. I mean, we couldn't hire somebody to do that. So it seems to me, listening to Joe and, you know, those of you that sound like are in favor of a tourism director, it seems like that's the route you need to go, to take care of a lot of the local organization that needs to be taken care of. And like I said, I'm with the Art Guild, I work at the Art Center, and I talk to a lot of people that come in. They need a tour, they need someplace to go to find out what's going on, and I don't think a marketing firm is going to do that. I give them a lot of information. I give them the history, et cetera, you know, where to go, what's here, what to see. And I think that personal touch is very beneficial, I think, in a town like ours. So I'm in favor of tourism, and it sounds like with the work that you've already done, had to do, you know, you need to consider that. The only other thing is, look back at why these people that are no longer with us, why are they not here? What went wrong that they chose to leave or we chose to have them leave? I'm just asking that question, I think you need to look at that. So when you're looking at hiring a director, go back over the last, since I moved back home, there've been seven, seven, I think seven, I could be six, so I moved back home in '07. How many directors have left? Why did they leave? So let's not make the same mistake again, you know? Go back, find out what's wrong, what did we do that these people didn't stay with us? So when you're looking at this decision, I think really go back and look at that, and then look at what you're doing right now, that only really a local person like you can handle. I don't think a marketing firm can do it. Maybe outsource. Didn't I hear the, I think it was Ottermont, was it you, Kara, the last time there was a meeting, and you said, oh, we outsource the marketing, and when they do what we want done, then are they on retainer? I'm not sure, but it's not something that's done all the time, Kara? I don't know.
Wasn't Ottermont.
It wasn't? Yeah, I think it was Mary Beth said that, somebody said that, no, maybe I'm wrong. Okay. So in any case, outsourcing possibly, I don't know what that would cost, but again, I think, consider some of those things whenever you're looking at a tourism director. I really think you need to go that route. Okay.
Any other comments from our gallery? Lot at the table. Thank you all for the input, much appreciated, appreciate you all coming and voicing that. With that, we'll wrap up that discussion. We'll move to work session, item number two. This would be the water tank that was recently removed from Jim Beckerman's property.
So the water tank is gone, I think the property's been worked on to, you know, cover up whatever, get out whatever needed to be removed up there. Mr. Beckerman, in his initial discussions with us, had talked about him taking over that property. It's a 40-foot, 40-square-foot piece of property that is adjacent to his land or right next to his garage, and he'd like for us to dedicate it over to him, a plain beat or something. In the, in the agreement that's in here, it talks about the easements returning back to him, but doesn't say anything about the property itself. The original property with the deed he brought in shows that it was originally given to Citizens Electric, and then I think it was, the city then had a need for a water, a water tank for feeding water over to Mississippi Lime, and then we just took over ownership. So the question is, do you want to, you know, $1 in no, you know, no sense consideration? You want to keep it? You want to?
Has anybody else expressed an interest in it?
We haven't advertised it. I don't know what use it would be to anybody else except for the neighbors.
Is there any other investigation property on it?
Yeah.
There are two, Mississippi Lime and.
Yeah. It's on the map.
So Happy, everything that we've done up there, I've seen loads of dirt, I've seen some fence being taken out, that was all in our original contract?
Yeah. I mean, I haven't gotten the, I don't know if I've got the bill yet or not, or have I? Sorry. But there wasn't anything extra on there from outside of what our, and I haven't been told that there's extra that would be added to it, so as far as I know, that's all part of what the, what Bowman's, no, yeah, Bert Bowman is taking care of.
So anyway, we can find out for sure that there's gonna be no extra charges for?
I can check.
And what about?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
You know, to make sure there's no additions to the contract and stuff, what was, and what about the easement and stuff, because there's obviously a water line up through there, and is that?
Steve can answer that better than I with that, is that the one line that does feed Mississippi Lime?
No, that says stuff off of Market Street that fills and would fill and empty that tank.
Yeah.
It's capped at the end of the line where the tower used to be, does still need to be disconnected from the line on Market Street. But it's still active until we disconnect.
But it's not, it's not anything we use currently.
Right.
And I don't see us using it in the future.
So that's not a big deal to disconnect that?
No, we'll have to just shut the line down, remove a section of pipe and plug the tee.
No real big cost?
Labor.
So this is.
I don't see why the city would have any interest in keeping it, and it would square his property back off, you know, I'm sure back to its original configuration.
I'm the same way. I don't want to go up there and mow it.
I just don't want additional liability with that line underground there, or you have to take the line out, or?
Well, I mean, I have a part to be at the condition of the easement returning to him, so, you know, we're not.
Doing anything.
We're not gonna, yeah, we're not gonna move anything, we're not responsible for it. So it would, it all comes down to an agreement anyway, which we bring back to the board, but I didn't know if we wanted to pursue it or not, or charging 10 bucks.
I mean, I don't see any reason to keep it and stuff, I just don't want any future liability with it. Because he was, he's been pretty vocal that, on that site up there, there is some lead contamination from a previous paint job. So if we're gonna give it away, I want, I want clear of everything.
I don't know if you can absolve yourself of all that. That may be beyond what any, any agreement would, what you could capture in an agreement and make it stand in court.
I mean, because that's a big liability.
We'd still have it even if, you know, anybody could go up there and claim injury.
Whether it's our property or theirs, I mean, it's still.
We're still going to cause it, so we'd still, we'd still be liable for it.
Yeah, I would want a legal opinion of that.
I'll talk to Mark about that part of it, but he's gonna draft the agreement anyway.
Right.
So just in general, are we okay with that request?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on that topic? Okay, take us to work session, agenda item number three, that'll be the second draft of the overall budget picture.
So on the table, you have three copies of the actual budget. We do that because rarely does anybody pick them up. So here is paperwork for your review for next Thursday, if you have any particular questions. Trying to kind of give you an idea where we are financially, where we spend our money in the general fund, what goes on with our enterprise funds and the dedicated funds. And then there's also the overall spreadsheets, and the overall spreadsheet is what we'll go through in particular next Thursday to cover how we've come up with these numbers. You have two spreadsheets in there of the overall picture. One includes just the step pay increase, and the other includes step pay and 3%. With the step pay and 3%, we can keep it at 50%, but we're also cutting out some items that were, that are in the budget. So the requests that are in the budget. So you'll see those on an eight and a half by 11 of the capital items that are requested. So I've got what was requested, I've got what's recommended, and that's what the department heads will come before the board and talk about, is those larger capital items or the capital purchases. And on the big spreadsheet, and again, I'll explain this next Thursday, but it starts from left, works its way to the right, general funds on top, on the bottom is the dedicated and our enterprise fund. You'll see where we are expecting to start and what we're expecting to end. Question? Anything in particular that we need to think about and look at?
Under the general fund and stuff, Legislative, the Viva Building sale, so basically, where is that $125,000 now?
In the general fund. So we move it to the Capital Projects Fund. That's where we moved the last 300, or 200 and some, 200,000? Yeah. So this is the last, last payment that we're making to ourselves in the other fund.
So what does that money get spent on?
Whatever you want to spend it on.
Right.
At this point, it's sitting in there as a savings account.
Right. So this is not transferring it into, it's transferring it out of? Which will leave that fund at?
You see where the numbers are. There's a transfer out portion on the upper part, and then you'll see the transfer in the Capital Projects Fund, or an income, it looks like a revenue source. And with Capital Projects, we also have some expenditures that were approved. Or I shouldn't say were approved, we've used it, we'll see if we put that approval into the next budget year. Any questions you have over the next week or so, if you have any particular about it, Oh, also, we put in the tenure capital, I haven't done that in the past, wanted to include that, kind of give you an idea of how we look ahead as to what our major expenses are gonna be in future years. It's an exercise after about the first five years of just trying to remember what repeats, because after five years, it's like, I don't know, because you don't know what's changing, you don't know what, what new technologies are coming. It's, it's difficult to figure that far out, but if you have a large item that you know is gonna need to be replaced, then you can put it in there and keep track of that in the future.
Because I thought that's what we were doing with some of that money and stuff from the Viva Building and stuff for the future possible purchase of an additional fire truck.
It can be used for that, it's in Capital Projects, you can pull anything out that we want, yeah. So we have 125,000 in savings now for the fire truck, and that was money that was So we have 125,000 in savings now for the firetruck, um, and that was money that was asked years ago to, to build, so we've been building that up. Um, and then if you want to spend money out of the capital projects fund, you can use it out of there as well.
Wes, anything we'd like to discuss regarding those tonight? I know we're going to have a meeting next, a week from today regarding a lot of these topics, so. Lots of data to go over. Okay. Uh, any other business to discuss during tonight's work session? Okay. I'll thank, go ahead.
Um, I don't know how to proceed with this, I guess, but, uh, Happy, I picked up a tone of voice from you that you're very much overburdened and I know it's been the general consensus to have a tourism director in place and that has fallen upon you in the interim always. Um, I'm concerned about that.
I've done it in the past, just doing it now to do what I can. So things don't get done probably as smoothly or as, or as efficiently as somebody that's in that position. But being that I control what funding, what funds there are, it's my responsibility then to oversee it and it's my direct report.
Right. So do you know where I'm heading with this?
I don't know.
Uh, you're not going to get overburdened to the point of, uh, throwing your hands up and.
That may not be a discussion for here.
Close session.
I mean, my intention at this point is we have a move to make, so don't expect a lot with tourism over the next couple of weeks for sure because our job is to get this, get this facility, get us out of here, get the contractor in and start working. Um, but it's just extra, extra work. But it's my, it's my responsibility.
Right.
Anybody else? I'll thank our guests again that came and voiced their input tonight and thanks to the TV as well for the plaques and recognition. Very much appreciated and we appreciate you guys too. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Thanks, Mary.